Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are announced, please provide your name and neighborhood for the record and you'll be given one, three minutes to speak, excuse me. We have one speaker this morning and that speaker being Ikuhana Hal Makena.
Grand Rising and good day to you all. My title is Ikuhana Hal Makena. I am the Grand Inca of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, and I lived in this region for forty-five years. I want to speak to, again, gun violence that has been plaguing our city as a public health crisis, as it is a situation that's near and dear to my heart, as each child is someone's child, okay? Doesn't matter the age, and it certainly doesn't matter their gender or race. We are losing our babies out of epic, uh, a number of a portion that we can't even begin to wrap our minds around how this got out of hand the way that it is. Now it's up to you to make sure that the resources are flooded into this situation, that every bit of resources are being used to stop this. This is our future, and our babies are dying younger and younger in these streets that you have oversight of. And so I employ you all to think about what can be done, to teach our children the skill set that are reasonable for the youth to envision a brighter future for themselves. Will you fund these opportunities? Will you make it a priority to fund these opportunities for the youth? Right now, City Council is debating whether they're gonna be able to open up schools, but I'm pretty sure some of these youths, if you survey through the communities and get out and do some real outreach in these communities, because I've already talked to several people and their skill set matches the need that the city has, to employ people to be lifeguards, to employ the youth to be lifeguards. There needs to be more mentorship programs funded in the city of Pittsburgh, in this region. And we're ready to lead the way. And if you will employ the resources, make sure that we can grab our youth and give them opportunities, then we're ready. I have a dozen people ready and willing to hit the streets to see what they need. We're already doing this work, because it's that important to us to figure out what is it that you need. We're talking to the people who are out here, you know, hopeless. These people don't have places to go, which causes them and leads them into the streets. They can't afford to live, and they definitely can't afford to live off of seven dollars an hour. What the youth is telling me directly, homelessness isn't a real issue for them. And so they're in the street doing what they can to make ends meet. And so there's an education disparity. They don't have the skill set. Perhaps they have a youth record that...
Thank you very much. Having exhausted our list of registered speakers, that moves us to our Standing Committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Cross. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law Chair by myself. We have one for Paper Bill fifteen eighty-eight.
Bill fifteen eighty-eight, resolution transferring a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars within the two thousand and twenty-one operating budget from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purpose of increasing pay for lifeguards and reopening as many pools as possible for the two thousand and twenty-one season.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Um, Mr. Chair, I know Councilwoman Smith wanted to be here for this discussion and she hasn't joining us, uh, yet. Do you mind if we, um, come back to this paper in a little while?
Sure. We will leave this open on the table and we'll move on to our new papers under the same committee, first being Bill fifteen seventy-eight.
Bill fifteen seventy-eight, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of PMA Management Corporation in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars in settlement of a claim for damage to a granite pillar at the entrance of Saint Michael Cemetery, twenty-seven twenty-nine South Eighteenth Street by a City Public Work Highland.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, amended. Uh, Bill fifteen seventy-nine.
Bill fifteen seventy-nine, resolution providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the city at tax sale, twenty forty-six Lay Street Lot and Block Number forty-eight E two sixty-two, and thereafter authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed conveying all of the city's right title and interest in said property to Prattwell LLC.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I wanted to ask, um, I believe Mr. DiMarco is on the line. So this is a house that's, um, in my district, it's on Troy Hill, and, uh, I believe that the, um, the person will be purchased, they'll purchase it through, um, uh, they've been going through conservatorship, and I was hoping that, uh, DiMarco could, uh, explain the process that that's going on here, because a lot of people in my district ask about conservatorship. There's a lot of, um, questions circling around this, this process and why this individual may have went this route other than just trying to purchase it through the city.
Sure. Uh, Councilman Wilson, and we've had discussions regarding, uh, the number of filings on the north side of Troy Hill. Um, I am the attorney with the law department that's responsible for these conservatorship cases. These cases are filed under the Abandoned and Blighted Property Act, an act that was written by, uh, Judge Walco when he was a state representative. Uh, he is now retired. He handled these cases before his retirement this past September. They're now being handled by Judge McVeigh. Uh, what the act essentially, essentially does is allow the court to take control of certain abandoned and blighted properties that are either owned by, um, individuals or businesses or owned by the city of Pittsburgh. Um, and in this process, uh, you have to have standing to file one of these lawsuits. You either have to be a nonprofit corporation within the city of Pittsburgh that's engaged in the development of, of abandoned and blighted properties, or you can be a property owner or a business owner within two thousand feet of the property, which is what we have in this situation. And the conditions of the act, you have to establish that the property is abandoned, that it's blighted, it's a public nuisance, it has not been occupied, uh, for a year, and that it has not been under, um, a contract for sale with a licensed real estate professional within six months. And many of these properties throughout the city that are owned by the city of Pittsburgh qualify under this act, and we're seeing now, uh, an increase in the number of filings, particularly in the Garfield neighborhood and in, um, on the north side and Troy Hill, not as much, but it's mostly down on the lower north side. Um, it, it's a situation, what I'm trying to, what I've recommended to the finance department is that we sell the property, because number one, we're gonna lose the case, the property's gonna go into conservatorship, and as the owner of the property, the city of Pittsburgh is number nine on the list of entities that are paid once the property is sold. Um, as the owner, if, let me give you a, for example, if the property is owned by an individual, the city has a tax lien, school district, the county, they're number two on the list. The county municipal liens get paid number two from the proceeds. Um, if, if you're the owner of the property, you're number nine on the list, so you are last in line to receive any funds. So it behooves the city, once these properties are subjected to this act, that we sell the property, um, once we determine we're gonna lose, and it goes into conservatorship, to sell the property to at least recover the amount of the tax lien, which is what we're doing in this particular case. The tax lien is, uh, fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars, and the property's being sold for fifteen thousand.
Well, thank you for that explanation. Um, I just wanted to, uh, clear up a few more, uh, questions circling around conservatorship. Um, you know, often people think that there may be someone still living in the, in the, or, you know, living in the house. Um, do we have instances in the city where someone is, um, you know, conservatorship has been filed and someone is still, like this one is abandoned and, you know, familiar with the case, there's someone that, you know, this is the property owner next door, uh, the tenant right there, they're experiencing, um, you know, what happens whenever a property's been vacant and abandoned for a long time, whether it's, uh, rats and, 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 um, you know, trash that's dropped off that shouldn't be. Um, so this one seems in line with, you know, I'm in support of this one, and I was just curious on, you know, are we experiencing others that have, you know, an occupant?
I, I have not seen that in that mass filing in your district. Apparently, there were some properties where that were, that were occupied. Most part, my experience has been, um, with city-owned properties, they're obviously vacant, abandoned. Um, I have not seen any properties that have been occupied in the filings, and I, I think we have now, I think I'm monitoring over two hundred cases, two hundred properties within the city.
It's good to know.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, how many of those two hundred do you think are likely to, you know, get, get the rolling, uh, from the judge that they, that they could go through the conservatorship law?
Most of them. I mean, th- these are two hun- the, the city right now, we're dealing with about, uh, forty-four properties of city-owned properties, the, the two hundred are, majority of which are privately owned.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, I think you alluded to this in your explanation, but what, what is, I mean, why would someone go through this other than just go through the finance department?
Uh, many of the properties aren't listed for sale on, on the website.
Okay.
Um, it, it's a long process to go through the finance department. There are some properties that four or five years they're backed up. Um, and, and I told the finance department, when I first got involved in these cases, one way to eliminate these cases is to list all of these properties with a Howard Hannah or Berkshire Hathaway. This will prevent the properties from going into conservatorship. If the city of Pittsburgh would have a contract with a professional real estate company and list all of the properties with a sign, all, and I'm telling you, Garfield's a hot neighborhood, your district's a hot neighborhood, you could sell these properties and, and at least recover your tax liens, which is what you acquired the property for in the first place.
All right. Well, that's definitely a further conversation with the finance department. Um, i- if you could answer the que- what's your, in your opinion, what is, why would it take four to five years to acquire this for the city?
I, that's, that's the finance department. I, I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I've only been with the city for a year and a half, so I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Well, well, thank you for all your work and, um, you know, thanks for answering all my questions.
Sure. No problem.
Uh, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I, I see that we're having a recurring discussion around vacant properties, and, um, this is the, the problem we've been dealing with now since the entire time I've been on council, right? So I, Mr. DiMarco, if you wouldn't mind asking just some, some concrete questions for me, I'm not gonna go into like all of the related policy issues around this, because we've had many discussions, and obviously, we need to continue having, you know, big discussions, um, going deeper into these issues. But I'm curious about the forty-four properties that are city-owned that you're tracking. You said you were tracking some two hundred, is what I wrote down, and that forty-four are city-owned. Uh, maybe starting with this one on Lay Avenue, did I say that right? L-E-Y?
That's correct.
Lay Street. It's, um, how many years has it been, uh, abandoned and blighted and city-owned?
The only thing I can tell you is that the city acquired it on, uh, September twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, so that's not very long in relative terms, actually, for the city of Pittsburgh. That's six years. Um, the last time we had the discussion, I shared a post agenda for Councilwoman Smith in, I think it was October or November of two thousand and nineteen, seems a million years ago, because it was pre-pandemic, right? About like five or six months before the pandemic. And we had, um, treasurer linear before she retired at the table, we had city controller at the table, we had, um, real estate at the table, and, um, we, um, the table kind of informed council that some of the properties that are under city control, like this one, have been on our books for twenty, thirty years, maybe more, right?
That is correct.
That it, so, yeah. So of these forty-four ones that you're tracking, do you know, kind of, is there a ballpark, or are there any that stand out to you, or some of them new, or some of them decades old?
Some are decade, the majority were acquired. I have a spreadsheet I'm looking at behind me. Um, many of them were acquired, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Fascinating. So that's actually a new wrinkle, really, since we, as a council, since I've been here. Uh, we, I think there was conversations about land, uh, land banking and the Pittsburgh land bank before I, uh, got onto council and then, uh, sponsored the legislation that passed in two thousand and fourteen. Um, and so these were acquired after that, so it's the, the inventory of city-owned properties has continued to grow, considering the land bank has only gotten one, one property that it's currently working on. Um, so, uh, but I, I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Wilson for opening up this conversation on conservatorship. It is even a problem in my district, which has, by now, most of the vacant properties, especially city-owned properties, are long gone, right? They were, they were bought, um, and moved by the finance department. The first few years I was here, we were almost always seeing District Seven properties on the lists of properties that were coming through from finance, and now we almost never see District Seven, um, properties, because I think all the city inventory is probably depleted. Um, so, uh, but, and yet, I have people fighting over properties in my district. So speculators and neighbors are kind of going head-to-head. I had a case where in Highland Park, someone who wanted to restore and live in a property, um, was in the process of conservatorship, but a, an LLC tried also to get it. And so they were both in front of Judge McVeigh. Um, and, um, I'm, I'm worried about this notion that private flippers, basically, right? People who are trying to just buy properties and flip them, which in some neighborhoods is what they've been trying to get for many years. I want to acknowledge that. But then other city neighborhoods, it's the opposite. There's been too much flipping, too much speculation, and, um, and, and the, the neighborhood feels kind of under attack. And in some of, some of the districts, um, some of the areas I've represented in my council district have seen tenfold home value increases, right? The hundred thousand dollar house is now near a million dollars. And that, which sounds absurd, right? It's not the case in, in lots of the city, but it is in Lawrenceville. It's, uh, why we've, we're working on other issues around affordability. So this notion that we, um, as a council, um, as you suggest, we just start listing properties, I think we, we really want more input from our neighborhood organizations, from city planning, about what are the needs in other parts of the city. And I just wanted to make sure I included that in this conversation, right? So that the public doesn't take away from this thinking like, well, the city's sitting on these properties for no reason. Um, yes, we should not have sat on them for so long. Yes, there is market demand, but there are also community needs that can be satisfied. And I want us, as a council, to weigh those, um, needs against market demand, right? The market isn't, you know, at this table, always the predominant, you know, social need. So, um, I just wanted to throw in my two cents there, and, um, thank you for bringing those numbers. I'm very curious to continue this conversation. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chair. Um, John, you're now the fourth John DiMarco in my life. Your relatives in Brookline?
No, I, I, it's funny you ask that, because I grew up in Dormart, and there was a Brookline John DiMarco, there's a beach feud John DiMarco.
I know both, right? Right, right. It's funny. So, hey, John, my question's, uh, relatively, you know, comparison as to what you're, you do as to what I did on a, with some private properties that I knew were abandoned, we couldn't find the owner, they're back on all their taxes. So, you know, I went through sheriff's sale, and, you know, we, there was an up cost as to, you know, what the taxes that they owed on it, some, I think the last one I looked at was about thirty thousand dollars. So it kind of started at that, and the private market then, you know, takes over and seeks out these properties. I had to seek them out myself, really, and just really, you know, do the, do the, do the grunt work on it. Um, what's the difference between what you do and like what, what I do or what somebody would do to get a house on market for sheriff's sale?
Sheriff's sale involves a foreclosure action. If a foreclosure, foreclosure action is filed against these properties, it cannot be subjected to the abandoned, abandoned and blighted act. So those, those properties are, that's a different method in which you acquire property. Usually, a bank is involved.
Yeah.
With the city-owned properties, the city acquired property through a T-sale, there's back taxes, county, city, school district, Carnegie Library even. Um, so those are the only liens that we know of on the property. There may be some other liens, but they, the bank hasn't foreclosed on it. That's the difference.
So, so you don't do anything until it's in the city's hands?
For the city-owned properties, correct.
Right, right. So you don't do anything with the private properties?
The private properties, the cases that I monitor, I'm there to protect the liens on behalf of the city, the school district and Carnegie Library. My function in those cases is to present the lien information through Jordan Tax, so that we get paid once that property is developed and sold. And we have been paid on, I think, two or three properties this year. Uh, Judge McVeigh is, is sensitive to the liens and preserving the municipal liens, and he's been very good about, uh, awarding the liens in the cases that have concluded.
Right. So we have nothing to do with the sale of that property, but if it is sold, then we are, we recoup our taxes?
Yes. I, I am there to present the lien information to Judge McVeigh and, and, and hopefully, and we get paid.
And then if the house or the home isn't sold, then it, we don't get paid until somebody sells it?
Well, it, sometimes a conservator can keep the property and lease it out, and then it's on the tax rolls. Um, I had a couple situations with that when I first started. The liens were waived, but the property, um, was back on the tax rolls. So it, it became rental property.
Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Cross?
Thank you. I'll just end the conversation briefly. Uh, a few weeks back, John, uh, council took under consideration a broader discussion on demolition. And what I'd like to add to the conversation is, uh, to take it further than that. It really is around land management and the city's plan for, uh, vacant, blighted, uh, abandoned, uh, or, um, cleared properties that are, um, no longer purposeful or, or serving the greater good, let's put it that. And so I'd just like to broaden the discussion, uh, philosophically for, for all members to take under consideration when we do do the post agenda, that, um, from what I can see, the real challenges for the city after things like police reform and equity and all considerations, it really comes down to land management, and land has always brought wealth and prosperity and power, uh, with it, uh, throughout the, the ages, throughout history. Uh, and, and at some point in time, the city is gonna have to truly come to terms and wrestle with, you know, how we sell or dispense our land, who buys it, uh, and what intent they have to use the, um, uh, to use it. You know, there's not a day that goes by that staffers in all of our offices are not dealing with LLCs that are around the globe, around the nation, that, uh, are three and four generations removed from any kind of legitimate contact information, just to track down who's holding property for what reason, you know, what purpose, and how to, um, either wrestle it back, as Councilwoman Gross was saying, and turn it over to a better community benefit, and not just simply for what the market might support at that time. So this is, it's just a bigger discussion, and I don't mean to open that can of worms, but I just would like to include that in the, uh, in the post agenda as we fashion it. It, it really comes down to the city's overall plan for, for land management. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Uh, let's go to Bill fifteen eighty.
Bill fifteen eighty, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the National Historical Publications and Records Commission's access to historical records, archival projects to enhance discoverability and access the Pittsburgh archival collections, and further provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fifteen eighty-one?
Bill fifteen eighty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission's Historical and Archival Records Care Grant to scan and rehouse twenty-six volumes of City Council Minute Books, eighteen sixteen through eighteen seventy-seven, and seventy-four volumes of Annex Bureau Books, and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed eight thousand sixteen dollars. The grant requires a match from the city in the amount of eight thousand sixteen dollars for this stated purpose for a total project cost of sixteen thousand thirty-two dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Brief discussion, Councilman. I just want to thank the Clerk's Office, uh, and Nick for all that they've been doing to, um, preserve our, our history in the city of Pittsburgh and to maintain those records, to get everything online. It's been amazing. We had a lot of positive feedback. So I just want to congratulate them and thank them for their work.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I just wanted to also say thank you, and it's, it's so very exciting for all the historians out there, or, or history, you know, amateurs, and, um, that we will be able to access these records that have just been in hard copy in Madam Clerk's vault. Um, and they're just, they're super fun, and it makes this kind of research back into what, especially on these land use issues, Councilwoman Cross, it's really fascinating to be able to go back more easily because the records are online, and I, my office has already been doing that. So thank you so much to the Clerk's Office, um, and to Nick for doing such a great job.
Yay, Clerk's Office.
Yeah, Nick, Nick has done an awesome job. We can, uh, we can say, have like a hundred and twenty-five years of records online now, which is, uh, he's telling me that right now that there's no other municipalities that have that amount of records available, digitized, online. So we're kind of setting the bar and setting the pace. So we want to definitely give a shout out to Nick Hartley in the archives and, as our archivist. So he's doing an outstanding job. He never took a day off when the pandemic kept working, so we're proud of him. Thank you guys for the support. Thanks.
I should probably give a shout out to the councilperson who preceded me, Patrick Dowd, who, um, I believe created the position for the archivist and was a, as a, as a PhD historian and advocate, very worried about the hard copy records, so, thank you.
Thank you all for the support.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
I just want to ask, um, I really appreciate all, all the work that's gone into this. Will these be, um, like PDF, uh, files, or will they actually be in, like, text, like searchable?
Nick is on.
Yeah. Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, so there's two grants for the one, the one from PHMC. Those will be PDFs, and they'll be available through a state website called Power Library.
Okay. Okay.
And for the other grant, uh, there is a digitization component. Um, we'll be scanning, I believe, the first fifty years of the city planning commission minutes and that will be on the same website.
Okay. Yeah, for some reason I'm envisioning like whenever Google went into all the libraries and scanned all the books and you know, they were able to, like some of that was searchable. It's I just didn't know what we were getting as well.
Yes, and actually it's funny you mentioned that project. A lot of that went on to uh, a website called Internet Archive and that's what we're using for the municipal record because it has a powerful search engine. Um, so the municipal record is available from eighteen sixty-eight to present through that website.
Oh, cool. All right, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yay, Nick.
Thank you.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us back to Bill fifteen eighty-eight, which is already open. Uh, Councilman Gross?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is the bill that we held last week and we had discussions um, with Director Chapman, I think he's waiting here about um, what can we do to try to open more pools? And that we found opens a kind of can of worms, right? That we um, heard last week in a meeting since that it's not just lifeguards. We're actually not paying a lot of our part-time employees well enough. And so there's a kind of um, ripple effect. And I said, well, I'm all here for that conversation. Let's talk about that. Um, so I'm just going to frame this a little bit. Uh, Councilman Lovell, are you talking to us? Sorry. Okay, that's right. Um, so that we have, I just want to kind of frame this a little bit since we did a lot of talking and learning over the last week. There are two parts of our city budget that are part-time workers. We call the one seasonal. It's a little easier to think of them today. It's like the summer part-time employees. It may not be perfectly accurate. The other ones are year-round part-time employees. Um, and so I tried to transfer the money into that seasonal or summer part-time employee budget. And it really, I think, is an important message to say, well, hey, you can't, you know, it's not fair to just increase wages for these summer part-time employees while we have year-round employees already employed and not adjust their pay scales as well. Uh, Mike Strelig gave me some numbers from our city council budget office. Um, he said, so if you, if you're trying to adjust pay scales in both of those parts of the budget, don't just think about the year one budget implications. You have to think about the five-year budget implications. And in an email from him, if I'm reading it right, that even if we did adjust both of those parts of the budget and carry it out for five years, it's about three million dollars. Um, I think in the scheme of things, that's a good investment. Right? We had it as a city, an executive order from the mayor in twenty fifteen that we would bring all of our employees up to fifteen dollars an hour. And so that executive order was issued in twenty fifteen and it kind of graduated up, or raised them from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. They were supposed to all be raised, I think, by twenty twenty. Um, but they didn't apply to the part-time workers in either bucket. So that was only for full-time workers. And I think we're long overdue for this conversation. So that is a much bigger thing that I just said than, hey, let's try to get pools open. But I think we have both issues really in front of us. Since it won, you know, effort trying to open more pools and pay all of these seasonal employees better, though not just lifeguards, but the pool attendants and the food people, um, and all of the people in that seasonal part-time uh, page of the budget better. Um, and I, I don't want to cut Councilwoman Smith out of here. I, I do have more to say about like, kind of what are the challenges of, of opening more pools that the director um, of DPW and Assistant Director of DPW and the Director of Parks and Rec kind of illustrated for us, that it may not be only pay scales that were a problem this year, opening pools. Uh, I'm going to let Councilwoman Smith jump in. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
I'm present.
Thank you. I, I just want to say that I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for bringing this up and and for working on this and Director Chapman, as, as I mentioned before, we all love Director Chapman, Chapman and think, um, you know, have hold him in high, high regard because he is one of our most respected directors. He, it respects counsel and uh, we, you know, in return, respect him. So I want to thank him for his, his work with us on this and um, Director Hornstein for um, chiming in uh, this week. Although um, I, I disagree with some of the thought, the comments. I, I, I'm concerned about how we're paying people, but right now I'm concerned about our kids and I'm getting them off the streets and into something more productive. And I don't know what it takes, whether it takes city dollars. I mean, we have all these partnerships with foundations. Foundations say that they want to do so much to help the um, minority community, the black community and, and, and um, also help us with crime. This is something we need help with. I mean, with, I don't know whether I like the idea of public dollars opening our pools, which I don't. Um, but I want our pools open. At this point, we've got to put our kids first. And I feel like there needs to be a broader conversation. Um, but it has to happen quickly. It, we just can't keep talking about, we've got to open these pools. And, and I do know that Director Chapman has a lot of challenges. I do think that there's a lot of challenges with our pools and the conditions of our pools and now paying water bills and other things. I think that there's a lot to, a lot to discuss, but we don't have time for the long, broad discussion. I think that we should be sitting down uh, this week if we can uh, Councilwoman Gross with uh, some foundations with some of the universities that all have pools um, that could be opening our pools up for our kids. We should be talking to the Port Authority and Rich Fitzgerald. Um, and they should be doing shuttles, even though they say they don't do shuttle services. I remember when I was young, they did shuttle services. So um, that's something they could recreate and take kids to the pools that are open. I, I'm not saying the city has to do something immediately today um, in opening the pools, but there's so many other solutions that we need to work towards. And so I think this um, if Councilwoman Gross, if you're willing to, I'll be happy to uh, you know, work with the administration and the um, the foundations and Director Chapman and Director Hornstein to see what we can do to, in the universities, to see what we can do to get these pools our kids to pools. I don't care whether they're city pools. I don't care uh, whether they're opened in every pool. I don't care if it's public dollars or, or, or um, public dollars or private dollars. I just want to get our kids a safe place for the summer. I mean, you, everybody sees what's going on with the homicides in the city and around us, all around us. And I, and we need to do something now to get them, get, get the kids into something positive. And we also need to help the parents. Sometimes it's a relief for the parents. So uh, you know, there's a lot of child abuse too in, in, in our city and sometimes we're not providing the avenues. You know, we talk a lot about things we want to do, but to me, this is a way that we could and should really work quickly uh, to get our kids and families into someplace where they can relax for the summer and be safe. So with that said, um, Councilwoman Gross, if you want to hold for one more week, I'll, I'd be glad for us to arrange some meetings. It's up to you. It's your bill and.
I'm, no, I'm, I'm really, I'm glad, I, I, I'm glad I said what I said, but I'm also glad you said what you said. I agree with you. The goal here is to make sure that we're providing more options of like healthy outdoor recreation this summer, acknowledging especially this is our second summer in the global pandemic, right? And all of these things were closed last year. This isn't our first week into this global pandemic. This is our fifteenth month or so. I think I'm losing count, right? People do need safe outdoor recreation and I know Director um, Chapman agrees. But what we learned this because that he's, we're, we're late in this conversation, right? If we'd had this conversation in February or March, it would be easier to ramp up these employees. So Councilwoman Smith, I think you're exactly right. I also want to acknowledge also for counsel, because we should all be aware that what we learned from DPW, or I should say reminded uh, by Acting um, Director Hornstein from DPW because he is uh, he asserts that he has been telling us that our pools are in terrible maintenance shape. And so many of them leak. They leak tremendously. Um, I'm told that in some of the pools, the water is refilling continuously. And I'll just remind the public that this year, we have to pay PWSA from the city budget, we have to pay PWSA's budget for our water use. That wasn't true last year, for the year before, or for any time before that. And so I, I want to acknowledge that that's what I found out or was reminded of this week. And so if that's a factor in us not being able to reopen pools, we need to fix that. And we need to really have that discussion. Again, it's maybe too late for twenty twenty-one, which is, I deeply regret and I think we all deeply regret. Uh, we should have fixed those pools and um, we, we really need to look for other options. So thank you, Councilwoman Smith. I'm happy to work on that to see if we can find other options. Director Chapman, should I give you time to have two cents? You, you, you explained yourself very clearly last week and you reiterated everything you had to say in private meetings or meetings with council members this week, but I, I want to um, give you the respect of, of giving you some time here. So please.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Thanks, Council President. Uh, Ross Chapman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Nice to see everybody. Um, yes, I think you summarized it quite well. Again, I can't speak for Acting Director Hornstein, uh, but there are facility-related issues, deferred maintenance that do impact uh, our ability to, I would say, soundly operate, soundly and fiscally soundly operate some of our swimming pools. Um, I would think that if we were to prioritize those pools in some way and go after perhaps capital funds or other things, other monies um, work towards um, uh, kind of ascertaining the, the current state and evaluating uh, the feasibility of an investment in those uh, assets, that would be a good step. Uh, yeah, and to reiterate, um, we have not stopped the recruitment campaign where, you know, we are we are, we do have that pay range where we can pay uh, lifeguards that have some experience fourteen dollars an hour to start. Uh, that's actively going on. I took a look in the NeoGov, the city's HR's application system. I just wanted to kind of drill down on a couple of statistics. It's interesting to note, and I don't think the NeoGov system is uh, um, it doesn't capture all of the interest that might be out there as related to any city job posting, but it is our, the kind of mechanism, the tool that we use. Um, this year, there have been for lifeguards, this is all positions. There's been a little over thirty-four hundred job views in the system. We've had ninety applications that appear in the system. That's a point zero two percent, point zero two six percent. It's not very many people applying for a job that they see. But when I compare that to other job postings for other like positions across season and part-time positions in our department, um, it's about three times higher than number of job views because of the active marketing campaign that's commenced since February, I would say January, February, we started to launch a push to, to recruit. This is, this just happens every year. I looked at twenty eighteen data in NeoGov again, approximately sixteen hundred views. Again, weirdly ninety applications. That's about point zero five six percent. So far fewer views, but twice as many applications a couple of years ago. So I think COVID has changed kind of everything in some way and wages and positions that were once attractive. I'm not, I can't equate that to COVID making them less attractive, but for sure, a conversation, an ongoing discussion about increased wages for part-time and seasonal hires. It's I think it's long overdue. And if we have it in a really cohesive collaborative way, maybe we can forge a couple pathways to, to make some improvements in how we're able to facilitate uh, not just summer jobs for kids, but, but jobs where we can retain um, young people, anyone, and move them through like city employment, have them step above and beyond a seasonal or part-time position and retain those individuals. That would be a really wonderful goal. So I just want to again reiterate my thanks for your support, your concern. We're, we're still at it. We're going to be at it all summer. Uh, Shelley and the team are working hard. Um, and um, happy Catherine as well, Assistant Director Vargas. We're happy to weigh in on any uh, meetings or, or, or other discussions.
I still have the floor, but I'll, I'll give it up, Mr. Cocke, on just one second. So what I did also hear is that this, because we haven't hired up for eighteen pools, you actually have dollars in hand. Right?
That is cool.
We didn't really in our discussions over the like, last week, figure out how to do better in actually getting anything open. So I want to acknowledge that. And so Councilwoman Smith is going to help us kind of go off in a different direction and try to augment our facilities with maybe partnerships with other facilities, which I'm fully supportive of. Um, but I did also hear you are still recruiting, but because we're late in the summer, if there are any like people who are certified lifeguards out there, they can apply. At what rate are you, can you offer someone who's already certified lifeguard?
Uh, yes, you know, a starting rate of, of, of about fourteen dollars an hour.
Okay, so you can apply for about, so that's just a advertisement out there to the world. If you're watching, please tell your friends or apply. You can apply for a lifeguard position and we would be very happy to receive that application. Um, and because we are, I don't want to scare anyone, but we are still a little worried about the level of staffing that you have for these eight pools. Right? Because there's such a competitive atmosphere out there. If we lose the people who've currently um, signed on for these positions, we could be at risk of, of hours of pools, right? So we want to make sure that we, we have more staff. So I'll stop talking there, but thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. We have Councilman Wilson followed by Councilman Cocke.
Hi, um, thank you, Director. And um, I just wanted to bring up another area that you know, we, we should look into because we really should be planning for, um, you know, obviously I understand we want to up as many this year, but you know, really next year and in the future. And uh, I don't want to, you know, you know, forget that there is a test at the end of this. So we're talking about, you know, the actual skill set of, you know, it's not, you know, it's ma- maybe not just a regular job where the skills can be learned quickly. Um, you know, to distribute um, food or supplies that we do and, and the different parks across the city, but um, I guess I'm speaking as someone who has worked um, at North Park when I was in high school, North Park Pool. And then also a little bit in college, that these tests are quite rigorous and uh, not only do you need a lifeguard certification, but you know, to tread water with a ten-pound brick isn't something that everyone's ready to jump in and do. So it's really maybe, you know, and also the, the city boundaries is what we're dealing with as well. So when you're out in the county and you're out in different municipalities, there's a lot of swim clubs out there, a lot more. Swimming is more of a you know, there's, there's a lot more opportunity for swimming outside the city. A lot of our city swimmers go outside of city for those clubs. Um, so I just want to recognize the challenges there as well. And it's likely a, a, a stronger partnership that needs to be created with the, the city of Pittsburgh schools. To uh, to understand, you know, what they're getting in their swim teams and, you know, what that looks like. Cause I imagine that's usually the, the pole of people that were going after is people that are on the swim teams around the city. Is that true, Director?
Uh, thanks, Councilman. Nice to see you. I, I think, yeah, I think you said a lot of really important things. Uh, I would agree with all of them. I don't think we go after just swim team, uh, young folks, but of course, those, those folks, as you mentioned, are they're a little, with experience, it makes it easier for onboarding. If they come in with some lifeguard experience and/or have been certified in the past, it makes it a lot easier for that rigorous training, as you mentioned. Um, to commence in, in a, in a shorter timeframe to get them kind of activated uh, and placed in, in a chair in one of our pools. It's the, those inexperienced youth where or anyone, anyone that's just less experienced, that would be inclusive of myself. I've never been a lifeguard. I can swim okay, but I certainly would need to go through every step of that training and that would be rather rigorous. It takes time to do that. Um, uh, so the consideration to, to be inclusive about any applicant that applies is, is of course the way in which we we work at this, but once we start to operate pools, we have to be very mindful about our resources to be able to train, certify while operate. Um, and it gets to be quite a lift. So we're hoping that we can recruit additional um, uh, experienced lifeguards with some level of experience to Councilwoman Gross's point. Uh, we do have some concerns about retention. We've, I've been working with our budget office and our existing monies. And again, we do have enough money this summer to, because we, we can't operate all eighteen pools to think creatively about perhaps a retention incentive structure of some sort. I don't know what that's looks like, but we're hoping to be able to put something together. Uh, we're still working on bus passes. Uh, we're, we're paying for certification. I think I mentioned that uh, last week. Um, We're throwing everything we can at this. And we, you know, we do have the money to kind of do that this year, weirdly, but ongoing, uh, there there needs to be a greater uh kind of investment in these positions and these opportunities to 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 kind of shore up the foundation, so to speak, so we can be a little more attractive um as an employer. Those things need to happen. But yeah, everything you said, Councilman, I agree with completely.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, um, I agree with all of what you all said. For me, you know, the pool was the center of our lives growing up. I mean, you know, it was like an everyday trek to the pool. Since then, they've closed many pools. I think it was previous administration that decided to do that. So we lost a good bit of pools, which is a real shame. However, I do have one really great pool, um, Director Chapman, and it is under construction. As Councilwoman Gross said, you know, a lot of them have leaks and Moore Park was like leaking like a sieve, I guess. And now that we have to pay for the water, it takes on a new meaning for us. And I I guess I just wanted to see where we're at on that. I know we had a problem with supply chain and material that we needed, but um I get calls daily on it. Brookline has over twenty thousand residents that live in it, so it's probably one of our largest, if not our largest neighborhoods. And it's the only pool there now. So there was two. They had shut the one down when I was referring to the previous administration at one point. So um, just wanted to see if you had anything on that, Ross. I mean, I'm getting a lot of calls like, hey, when is it going to open? But um, you know, we're grateful that we're getting a new pool, but uh, you know, everybody wants to use it yesterday.
Understood, Councilman. Nice to see you. I missed seeing you last week. I don't think you were on last week. I think that question should might best be answered by Acting Director Hornstein. I I I think it's on track. I think there were some issues with with materials. I think there were delays in getting steel and other construction materials. Um, that might have pushed things back a little bit. I don't know the timeline. I uh, I'm just not really aware. I have been there. I have seen active construction. Um, I think all the permits are in place. So things are moving, but not as quickly as we'd like them to move. And some of that, I think, was just the nature of trying to secure all of the, all the materials that were necessary for the completion of that project. But there could be some other variables too, but Chris would probably know a little bit.
Yeah, you know, he is the one I've been talking to regularly on it. So um, I'll get my information from him. And you're right, I mean, bulldozers are moving again and you know, the problem was nothing was going on. People, it was just sitting there. It's all torn apart. And um, so so it's just good to see, you know, people there working, I guess, at this point. The other thing was, you know, um, I couldn't agree more with paying more money to especially a certified lifeguard at fourteen dollars an hour. I think the pools for recreation are most, one of the most important things our city provides. So whatever we have to pay them to get them to come in. I personally believe that you know, um, money is the driving force to incentivize incentivize people to come to work or go to work. So um, whatever that dollar amount might look like to get people out of their chair and in a lifeguard chair, I would support. And finally, as Councilwoman Gross said, I appreciate your plea to all lifeguards, all in any, you know, so really, and and that's probably the best way is just for us to get the word out there. Do you actually have a marketing program that you're kind of, you know, zeroing in on wannabe lifeguards or people who are potentials? Are we marketing it or is it just we're we're hoping they apply through what we have online?
Uh, Council, we we have a pretty robust kind of social media marketing campaign, kind of a single driving force in our department. Sue Lucas, who does a lot of this in conjunction with the aquatics team, but they do everything early on, late winter, early spring, from visiting schools and posting flyers. HR has um had advertisements on the radio, newspaper ads. I think I mentioned last week that last year we we ran ads on buses. I'm sorry, this would be twenty nineteen on Port Authority buses. We kind of tried to measure that. We didn't think it was hugely impactful. But uh, again, this is a, this recruitment challenge was is un, was is an unanticipated kind of problem. It's not something that we thought we would be dealing with uh until recently, until maybe the last four weeks or so, when it looked like that typical ramp up in interest and applications just wasn't happening. So we were really budget conscious initially because of the, you know, the twenty twenty-one budget that that we all have to kind of manage this year. And then that, those challenges or concerns became kind of mitigated in some way when we realized, well, we're just not seeing a number of applicants. And there's a not, a a number of variables as to why. So it shifted from concerns about monetary concerns to concerns about recruitment. So we're still pushing on information on social media and elsewhere. We're trying to actively recruit experienced lifeguards. And the team is still working pretty hard to keep the eight pools operating. We've had some issues with the storm that came through on Sunday that a mudslide in Shenley and power outage dam. And those kinds of things happen throughout the summer. And when you multiply the number of pools that you operate, you multiply those, the number of potential kind of risks and hazards and so forth. I'm happy, yeah, sorry, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I happen to think monetary and recruitment are one of the same. Uh, you recruit with, you know, a good paying wage. Uh, I bet you if we put that out there for twenty dollars an hour, we would have plenty. But I don't know. So anyway, I'd love to see the pools up, and I agree with what everybody said. That's should be a high priority of ours to get the ones that we have on the slate to, you know, make sure they're fully staffed and and the right, you know, um, trained people there. Um, I happen to think we, you know, we should put it out for more money. Fourteen dollars an hour is not enough. It's really a great job. I mean, you sit there, you get a free tan, uh, you know, it's um, so anyway, okay, that's it. Thanks. Thank you, Director.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wait a bit.
Wait, what's the motion?
We're not passing it. I'm sorry, we're gonna hold it one week. Did we have the motion? Actually, I don't think we actually made the motion, Councilwoman Smith.
We did, we did not. I jumped ahead of myself. I apologize.
What motion to hold one week?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. Thank you. We now need a motion to approve our invoices.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the insurance departmental transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by uh Councilman O'Connor, one supplemental paper, Bill sixteen nineteen.
Bill sixteen nineteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Barrow Technical Fireworks Inc. for the display of an fireworks show in conjunction with the city's Fourth of July festivities at an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to.
My apologies. I am going to have to leave for a meeting. I just wanted to register aye votes for all following bills. Thank you.
Oh, noted.
Thank you. Uh, the bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, uh, first supplemental paper, Bill sixteen oh one.
Bill sixteen oh one, resolution granting unto Charles Deans their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and you said the wrong cost and expense, a new ADA compliant entrance ramp at forty-seven forty-eight Liberty Avenue in the Eighth Ward, Seventh Council District.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen twenty.
Bill sixteen twenty, resolution, further amended resolution number seven ninety-seven, adopting and approving the twenty eighteen capital budget, the twenty eighteen CDBG program, and the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three capital improvement program by reducing Cowley Recreation Center demolition and reconstruction by nine hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars, and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by eight hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and tree planting by seventy thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second, pre discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson?
Uh, yes, um, so this is a a project in in my district, and I've been working closely with um the administration, also uh Director of PLI to uh to work out something that we can uh see some emergency demos that have to happen right now. Right now, I have buildings that have barricade, DPW barricades around them uh that need to be taken, that should be taken down. I imagine, and also I'm aware of others, um, everyone else on this call likely has other uh, other council members have um buildings in the same situation. Uh, this project is not going away. It is on track. We're actually having another design meeting here in the next month. This is uh something that we have to do now so that we can do this demo. Um, so we have these pay go, pay go dollars available. And um, then work with the administration. We, I have a commitment that these funds will be replaced in the, in this upcoming budget. But we have um, funds already. There's only partial, the partial of the funds to keep the project going. And I'm going to work hard to fund the rest of the project. So I'm in support of this project in my area, and the project does not stall. And um, have a commitment to get this uh back in the budget here. So it's a, you know, it's a unfortunate situation that we have to uh move money like this. Uh, definitely don't want to, you know, see this move and try and recoup the the funds, but you know, it's it's also very um challenging times whenever you see that, you know, we're we're looking for funds um to actually uh address a public safety concern. So um, with that said, I'm in support. And um, I don't have no further, no further comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm looking at, so this is sixteen twenty, just make sure I'm in the right place, looking at the right dollar numbers, right? Bill sixteen twenty is the Cali Recreation Demolition and Construction. You'd be taking that nearly million dollars and moving it to demolish the homes that are, why did, I was just trying to follow kind of the line. And then, okay, so and then increasing by, there seems to be like a oh, so you're increasing demolition of condemned buildings by eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand and increasing tree plantings by seventy thousand. And that's why the not numbers, you had those up. Those are the taking the numbers that that adds up to the nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
I can answer.
I just look, yeah, I'm looking for it, not even.
If you want to interrupt it, because I, the director reached out and said that she's going to be available. So I do have some information.
Okay, yeah. And then you said that you had a commitment for replacing the Cali Recreation nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Where would that be replaced from? Do you know that?
Well, uh, I guess a few different ways. I don't, you know, the the current funds, the way it is set up right now, that some of it is PGO, some of it is bonds. So when we um, you know, this is the PGO dollars. The PLI already used their one million in PGO. And um, this uh attempts to get them up to the two million that they needed. But you know, in terms of the budget moving forward, uh, we'll see where the funds are chosen, but I imagine it could come from several sources, especially with the new money that will be coming in.
From the American Rescue Plan money?
Uh, I don't have a confirmation where, you know, which, you know, whether it's going to be the 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 new bonds that we would be using or whether it be the ARP.
Right, so, and then secondly, I'm just not, I'm not saying this is in timing wise feasible, but it does strike me that what Mr. DiMarco just said was that, gosh, some of these buildings would just sell if you would just list them for sale. Do, you know, it makes me wonder if a condemned house, right? I I'm assuming it says condemned buildings, but these are homes in your district.
This is not, this isn't for me. This is for all of us. Uh, all, all, like, I went and visited, I went and visited a few homes that are in my district, and the roof literally fell in
Yeah.
Uh, to several properties.
Yeah.
And to let that uh, you know, continue would be.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that this, that strikes me that these are places where the community would prefer to see a home built, right? So we, we're, these aren't places where we might want open land or right of way or other purposes, like that, you know, there is community support for continuing to be a home. And so these are the types of things that if Mr. DiMarco is right, and you could just put a for sale sign on them and not worry about taking them through treasurer's sale and and that kind of stuff, it just makes me wonder if, you know, if he's right, and there would be buyers for them, even though they're falling in. Um, as I, I think I mentioned the last time when we motioned for the post agenda about these properties that, you know, in Lawrenceville, a a vacant, a piece of land, even a twenty-foot by ninety-foot piece of land is market listed at a hundred thousand dollars. That there's that much market demand. And so instead of the taxpayer, not, maybe not for the ones in your district right now that you're terribly concerned about, but some of these citywide, maybe in someone else's council district, that the cost to the taxpayer of doing the demolition could be, it could be, you know, uh, if the speculator's one property, let its speculator have one of these properties and bear the cost of the demolition, the site remediation and construction. I'm just curious. It makes, it makes me curious, right? Whereas the, in my neighborhoods, we're trying to mitigate speculator pressure um against kind of community concerns and affordability concerns, but I know that that's not true in in other council districts. So I just wanted to say that these, these are the kind of obvious, if there was a place to experiment with Mr. DiMarco's idea, it would be in in this kind of category.
Yeah, I disagree. I don't think that this is uh the conversation. More so, you know, I mean, I can defer other council members who represent their neighborhoods, but we're literally talking about houses that have bricks in the street. This is a a situation where it's dangerous for the residents next door. I, you know, I'm not sure about your district, but my district uh does have a serious problem with vacant abandoned properties. So this is for emergency demolitions. What you're bringing up is a great conversation. That's what we were talking, talking about earlier. Uh, we've reached a point where, you know, we can't wait for the property owner. If there is a property owner or if we can find one of the thirty property owners that may be you know, on the list that we could contact for this property, for them to pull the permit to fix the, fix the roof. It's beyond that. And I defer other council members. I feel like I'm taking a hit for the team here. So I feel like other council members could chime in to talk about the struggles that they're having in their communities, the barricades that are around these properties. I'm definitely on board to fix the problem of vacant abandoned properties, but this is in the conversation.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coghill?
Yes, uh, I'm also in full support of this. I myself purchased a couple condemned properties that were not structurally unsound, and they're back on market and they're back up and running. So just because a property is condemned does not mean that it needs to come down. Um, however, I also have, like, uh, Councilman Wilson, properties that are basically falling into the street. And it's not even about just the property. It's the the house or the chimney falling down you know, onto somebody on to our property. So so I do feel there's a great need for demo. Only in those cases, of course, but if a house could be salvageable. And Councilwoman Gross, you had mentioned, you know, would somebody buy it with the house on there? I find it very hard to make. hard to make the plea to some developer or would be homeowner that they don't wanna purchase a property with the existing structure on there, because the, the red tape that they have to go through and tearing it down, and asbestos remediation and all that. So, um, I, in my district, am trying to get certain properties torn down, so they would be marketable, you know, and if you give somebody just a flat piece of land, and they could start building, I think it's much more appealing. However, if we could find people to buy them in the condition there, and that would be good too, if they, if they would take them down, so, so the cost doesn't come back on us. I, I just don't know what the answer is there, um, but I do feel the need for emergency demo in many cases, um, for public safety, really. So, that's all.
Thank you, President Smith.
Thank you. And I just wanna add the same thing. I, in my district, Councilwoman Gross, we do do a combination of things. We try to refurbish homes, and we have a lot of uh, stabilization programs with, uh, Richard Stipe is doing one currently in, uh, several of my neighborhoods, but we also have these properties have sat for years, and it's almost, you come in, you see the, that we're contributing to the blight in neighborhoods, and to the depression in some of these neighborhoods. And I know that what you're saying is about them coming down, but sometimes, some of the residents want to buy the property next to them for a side yard, so that they can increase their property. Um, they just are so tired of dealing with the house next to them, they don't even want another house near them. And just even the construction of having them so close, and so, such close proximity. I think that, um, there's lots of places where we could do demo, and lots of places where we can set, salvage some land, and, and there's gotta be a combination, as, as Councilman Kraus mentioned earlier, it's, it's about the whole land management um, in the city, and I think that's a conversation we have to have. But I do hear what you're saying, but I wanna say that I'm so thankful that this money's going, uh, coming forward now, because in our district, people have waited decades for some properties to come down, and honestly, this is not even enough. I think we need to give Director Kinter even more money, so that we're not forcing people to live next to, uh, blight, and, um, and, and some, I mean, so many things that come with those, those properties are just, I, I mean, my, my heart breaks when I go into the community and I see them, and I, I wanna take them down myself, and then the county has increased, um, you know, how we have to, the rules and guidelines on how we have to, um, abate the properties and abate the asbestos. So that's increased for the public to know. I mean, it used to be cost as around eight thousand dollars for an average house, now costs us between thirty-five and forty-five thousand for an average home to be demoed, because we have to abate the asbestos differently. They have emergency demo, where they, you don't have to worry about those, 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 um, the abatement, but at the same time, the, it's just increased our cost tremendously, so it's, it's really causing a lot of problems in the communities. And so, I feel so sorry for the residents living next to it, and, and I'm thankful that the administration's putting this funding forward, and that they'll see some relief, but I think that we need to look into additional funds to make sure, um, we're just addressing this issue across the city in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Kraus?
Okay, second round.
So, Mr. Chair, forgive me, uh, my phone's blown up today, and I, I apologize for coming and going. Are we still on the demolition piece? I, I'm happy to vote in support, uh, I, I will support today, uh, but once again, just want to, uh, put it out there for us to be mindful of what a broad discussion demolition really is, uh, and to reinforce, um, comments made by, uh, uh, the Chair, uh, Councilman Lavelle, about, a- and even Councilwoman Gross, uh, and myself, that at time, preservation is, uh, the right thing to do, and, uh, I constantly strive to strike a balance, um, especially in hilltop neighborhoods where, um, nobody, but nobody wants to see us come in and just demolish a neighborhood, uh, and that there are plenty's, uh, plenty of properties that are, uh, ripe for preservation, uh, and, and the, that demolition really is a balancing act. Having said that, I have properties that, you know, people would like to turn feather me over, because they haven't been demoed yet, uh, that absolutely need to come down no matter what. So, I just put that out there to say that, uh, I'm working with Brush and Bob about a much broader conversation about, uh, 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 land, um, land use, uh, throughout the city in a, in a number of different ways. Um, and, uh, just, I just want council to be mindful that this really is a really broad conversation, and most likely I will take that post agenda into a series of, uh, of different facets of, uh, of land management, uh, throughout the city and the different challenges that we face there. So, thanks for your time, Mr. Chair, appreciate you.
But then there. Back in round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I do, and I just acknowledge that we, we've said before, but we can, I think we can always repeat that there are such drastically different markets throughout city neighborhoods, right? So, we have hyper-injected neighborhoods, like many of the ones that I represent, and under-invested and disinvested neighborhoods, all in the same city, and it's, you know, it's council's job to, we, we, I think this council's done a good job of trying to balance with policies to try to accommodate, like, both of the negative ends of the marketplace, and that, that we continue to have that conversation. Wouldn't it be nice if we didn't allow one more house to get to the position that it was that, that immediate public safety hazard that we needed to fix yesterday, because it's going to be a danger, it is an imminent danger to people. Um, and I think that we could at least start striving for that, right? So that the house that is maybe condemned, but salvage, salvageable, like, uh, Councilman Kalkio was saying, some can be, you know, bought and, and restored. Um, we don't allow those to become the house that Councilwoman Wilson is like, no, we need to take it down immediately, like this minute. Um, that's not, let's, what can we do better? To not allow these houses to have to be taken down. I think, I think that's a place where we, we should encantake action. So I'll just leave it there, and, um, we, we have lots of work to do around this issue. Thank you, Councilman Kraus, for your contributions too.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just kidding. Kidding.
Oh, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, recognize the need for preservation. Uh, I just wanted to elaborate more on what emergency demolition did. Um, since, um, I had a large structure, um, literally ex, almost explode, uh, exploded into the street last year, it was a church, and we didn't know about that. Um, there weren't, uh, you know, this was a church, and there was a large beam, it seems to be there was a work going on on the beam. Um, and then that dislodged and literally, I mean, it was on the news and everything. It exploded into the street. This is something, and there was a large conversation after that, like, how do we protect our historic structures like this? How do we protect our historic, you know, churches? Uh, uh, you know, properties that are, you know, been around, the houses that have been around for a hundred fifty years, that had these ornate, uh, you know, details to them, you know, how do we preserve them? Uh, but, we actually don't, some of this, we know what we're gonna spend the money on, but we don't know what the next, like, tragedy is gonna happen within a neighborhood where they have to, uh, just like this church, they have to show up, be allowed to show up, um, and, uh, the very next morning, or that day, they're ox, they're, I'm not sure of the terms, but they're meeting with, uh, the people who are gonna do the, the emergency demo. You know, the contractors that are coming on site, and they can get the bid. So to turn this, you know, to have these funds available for them to do that is critical to us, like, maintaining safety within the city. And so we, you know, ultimately, we have, we may have some on the books that we know that there's, you know, bricks in the street, DPW has the, the horses around the house, um, and, you know, it's, you know, they're not gonna do a, an asbestos inspection, you know, they're just going straight, and they have, they have to take it down, uh, because of, because of safety. But there is structures out there that we may not know about, um, that there will be, uh, you know, a collapse, and we have to, um, remediate that situation. So, uh, with that said, I just wanna talk more about what emergency demolition means, um, in terms of, we, we may not actually not know what this money will be spent on, some of it. You know, it could be like five hundred grand, where it's still left over, um, where we need that for, uh, the next property that may have work being done on, that doesn't pull a permit, doesn't have the right architect, and it just collapses when they're in construction, or when they're, you know, everyone's left the job site. Uh, so, um, anyway, enough said, thank you all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Kalkio?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, just in summing things up, I do believe there are a lot of condemned properties that can be, you know, remodeled and rehabbed. There are a lot also that can't be and won't be. Um, it's a case by case, you know, basis, you, you know, it has to be evaluated, and if it's deemed unsafe, and it's going to cost more money to try to fix the place than to keep the shell, then obviously it comes down, should come down. Um, Councilwoman Kale Smith, uh, you know, mentioned side yard programs, they're very popular in my neighborhood, you know, people increases the value of everybody's property on that street, just to have nice little green space there, or if you overtake, take it over as part of your yard. Um, but going forward, yeah, it's a case by case, you know, situation. Um, I do believe in District Seven, Councilwoman Gross's district, I think I could sell a house, come and fall in down, and people will buy it, because the land is so, you know, sought after there, and they'll take that, they'll make that effort to remove that house themselves. In my area, I think people were just like, nah, I don't wanna have to deal with removing the house. So, and, and I think Councilwoman Gross is pointing out, each district is so different, and, you know, we have different, you know, homes, different housing stock, and, um, you know, so, obviously though, if a place is deemed in good shape, the roof's in good shape, and the foundation's there, um, you know, it's best to put that on the market. But, um, I'm referring to mostly properties that I just know will cost more to rehab, and that's really what it comes down to. Is it gonna cost more for them to rehab than it is to build? Or just make it a side yard? So, okay, yeah, I look forward to having this conversation, it's very important for me and my district. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill fifteen seventy-three.
Bill fifteen seventy-three, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of the U.S. Arm, Army Corps of Engineers, the Pittsburgh District Corps, in an amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred two dollars and twenty-six cent for work in collaboration with the Sawmill Run Local Protection Project.
Uh, motion to approve for a brief discussion.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman, Madam President, you may know better than I. I'm just curious as to what, what, what project this money is going to. I didn't know if it was in my district or your district, I should know probably, but I don't.
We probably should have a follow, we probably should have a briefing or a meeting with them to get some details, because they're working on along that whole corridor. So, to know specifically what project this is, but I do know it needs done. I mean, the whole area needs, it's a lot of work.
It continues to flood. Last week, it was like a raging river. I mean, it was scary that the way that creek gets, um, and it goes to, you know, more development upstream and more water coming downstream is really, I think, um, you know, not only the, the amount of rain that we got, but continues to be a problem, is going to be a problem. And I just didn't know what this project was for, where it was for, I know they're doing work along there, um.
Yeah, I have someone in my staff attends the meetings, but I do know, but, um, but I didn't, I do not know specifically which part of this project it's for, but I know that you and I both know that that entire quarter needs a lot of, a lot of funding and a lot of help.
I see Director Ricks popped on, maybe, and she popped on to answer that?
Yeah, hello, uh, Corinne Ricks, I'm the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Um, indeed, uh, Sawmill Run needs a lot of work. That is not what this warrant is for, however. This warrant is actually for work that was done by the Army Corps of Engineers back in, the work was completed um, back in nineteen ninety-nine. This is a very old project for which we had a, a local obligation, um, to pay for some aspects of the work. Um, that was never cleared. We didn't kind of close the books on this project. Um, the Army Corps, um, uh, has come back now um, and, uh, and is requiring us to complete that, um, or it will put in jeopardy if we fail to, um, uh, kind of close out that project, it will put in jeopardy um, their work and their participation in some of those ongoing projects that we're working on today. And there's a range of different projects that we're working on today. So this is really just a, a cleanup accounting um, of a very old project, uh, that, that frankly, we didn't, uh, we, we were not aware, um, that this remained an open item.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And Council President Smith? You're on mute.
Sorry, just real briefly, Director, I just wanna also ask, I know we've had some projects done with, uh, Craft and Borough and, and other boroughs around us, and I believe that there was some money owed to us from some of those, I just wanted, I'm not sure if we're collecting on some of those projects, so just wanna make sure that that's on your radar.
Um, thank you, um, Madam President. We are working on some of those, yeah, we're aware.
I can send you exactly some of the things that I'm, I'm referring to, okay? But just wanna make sure it's on your radar. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Director, how are you?
I'm very good, thank you.
Good, good to see you. Uh, just publicly want to acknowledge and thank you for your quick response, uh, Sunday night, uh, to the slide at eighteen, the Crossman, really appreciate the effort and energy that you put forward, the department for, for, Tommy Joyce put forward. Understand it's, it stabilized and cleaned up. I did get one call this morning from a gentleman wondering if there was a bigger plan that might unfold for that, um, and perhaps maybe you and I could take that offline, uh, and, uh, maybe talk a little bit later today, so that I can keep, uh, residents up to speed as to where we go from here.
Um, sure, we have not been able to do a thorough assessment of that, but that's, you know, it, as it just occurred on Sunday night, um, but we're, we're out there now that it's, uh, dried out a little bit to.
Well, that's a good enough answer for, for today. I'd be happy to share that.
Okay.
Good. Thanks, Director, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended, Bill fifteen seventy-four.
Bill fifteen seventy-four, resolution providing for a supplementary agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for local costs associated with the state Route zero zero two eight, Section eight oh nine project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed one hundred forty-four thousand four dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, one supplemental paper, Bill sixteen sixteen.
Bill sixteen sixteen, resolution for the, um, resolution number eight forty, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty Budget and the Twenty Twenty CDBG Program, and the Twenty Twenty through the Twenty Twenty-five Capital Improvement Program, so as to reduce Northside Cultural Collaborative by ten thousand dollars, and increase North Cultural Collaborative and Northside North Shore Chamber of Commerce by ten thousand dollars, and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, one new paper, Bill fifteen eighty-six.
Bill fifteen eighty-six, amendments amending and supplementing the City Code, a title for public places and properties, Article eleven, Part two, Chapter four seventy-seven, permits and fees, Section four seventy-seven oh one, permit park procedures, seven oh two, fees for swimming pools, golf courts, skating rinks, and other recreational facilities, so as to give priority to city residents for park facility rentals.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Brief discussion?
With discussion, yes.
Yeah, uh, uh, Madam President and Councilmembers Gross and Strasburger, may I join you on this?
Sure.
Thank you. Happy to. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing.
I actually just thought maybe we should hold it for one week. Um, that's what I was gonna say, I just wanna hold it for one week till we work through some of these concerns, but what I am trying to do, is this the piece for the rental fees where the residents pay a lesser fee if they're city residents? So I think that the, um, office asked if they could, um, they had a few concerns, so I, I worked through them one week and if by one week they're not okay with it, then we'll pass it anyway.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to hold?
So yeah, motion, uh, motion to hold one week.
Second.
Thank you.
Say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That moves us to Innovation Performance Asset Management Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Strasburger, one supplemental paper, Bill sixteen oh eight.
Bill sixteen oh eight, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Sabrina HCM Inc. in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for professional software support hours provided to the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, one, one deferred paper, Bill fifteen nineteen.
Bill fifteen nineteen, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official school facilities plan for proposed land development located at forty-five fifty-four through forty-five sixty-four Penn Avenue.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held six weeks. Uh, last bill of the day, Bill fifteen seventy-six.
Bill fifteen seventy-six, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official school facilities plan for the Cal Bride Place Project, north side of Pittsburgh, near the intersection of California Avenue and Kirk Road Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, excuse, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That exhaust our agenda for today. I do have some meeting announcements. Council will hold a cablecast public hearing this afternoon at one P M. On Bill fourteen sixty-five as it relates to renaming the fountain and Allegheny Commons to the Patricia Reagan Rooney Memorial Fountain. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on council meeting webpage by eleven A M. Today. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Council will meet next Tuesday, Wednesday, June twenty-second and twenty-third at ten A M. For the regular standing committee meetings respectively. To register for next week's council meetings, fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by nine A M. Tuesday and Wednesday for regular standing committee meetings. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. City residents and stakeholders are invited to share their input on the city's twenty thou, two thousand twenty-two operating and capital budgets by taking surveys either online at W W dot engage dot Pittsburgh P dot gov slash twenty twenty-two or by calling three one one. The capital budget survey is open through June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one and the two thousand twenty-two operating budget survey is open through July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any announcements from members?
Mr. Chair.
President Smith.
Yeah, I just want to real briefly just say the bills that I had today for the parks. Uh, one was to, for the park shelters, so that city residents who are now paying a park tax pay less for a fee, and this is the Women's Caucus, uh, decided that we wanted to make sure that there are residents, we're getting something for the money uh, that they're paying, the additional fee that they're paying. Um, so we wanted to give them a reduced fee and we want to give them the opportunity to rent the facilities prior to anybody else um across the county or whomever. Um, so that our city residents have priority. Uh, a lot of times I border the most boroughs and, and, you know, our district borders the most boroughs than any other district and I work really well with our boroughs, but I have to be honest. There are times when uh we have issues to work through and some of them around the parks where our residents are treated different. We actually had a park where it said no city residents allowed. Um, and we got that signed down, but um, but I do want to say it's, it's been challenging sometimes. So I want to make sure that our residents um are respected and feel um some, some benefit to, to paying the additional tax for the parks. And this is one way that we can show some priority to our residences by allowing them to rent the facilities first and have the first dip bids on them. And to get, to do so at a, at a lesser class. And I want to thank the Women's Caucus and now Councilmen Kraus for uh working with us on this. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, we need a motion to, I believe everyone ended up logging on, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.